Good evening, everybody. The Wunsaket School Committee meeting on Wednesday, February 23rd. It's not full of water at 7:00 P.M. Dr. McGee, roll over.
Chairman Borje.
Here.
Vice Chair Burton. Here. Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Bur.
She's here.
Is here.
So, yeah. She is here.
Would you please join me in standing up for Mormon hymn songs and the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the law of the Constitution, the Constitution of our nation, under God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all. I understand we have a presentation by the Harris Elementary School. Mr. McKinnon? Would you like to go down or what's going to happen?
Yes, you can stay in there. I'm trying to think. We're going to have a projection screen put up, so you might want to...
Oh, yes, we go down. Right, so we're going to be stepping right through the microphones to see the presentation of the Harris Elementary School.
Okay, if I could have a Smile students, come on up. So sit right down the front, because you're going to be doing the presentation. Do you? No, I might have that. Ryan. Who is it? Henry. Henry. Okay, I just want to introduce. We have probably three quarters of our Smile students here, so I'm just going to call out their names if you are here. Just raise your hand. I've got Abby, Amberlee, Babacar, Jacob, who's not here, Fatu, Madison, Josiel, Mariah, Abigail, Vicky, Olivia, Malin, Zakari, Daomi. We have two Melissas here. Melissa? Okay, neither Melissa is here. Jay Lee is here. Ariana and Alexandria. Those are our Smile students. Smile is an acronym for Science, Mathematics, Investigative Learning, Experience. Our coaches are Ms. Catherine Kraus and Ms. Melanie Clark. You're easy. Right here in front of us, right here. Our students have a little presentation. Let me just give you a little background into Smile. It started around 1994 at Oregon State. The University of Rhode Island picked it up, I believe, right around 1994. The numbers that Smile puts forth, to me, are staggering. They're very good. And let me just throw these out. Now, these are Rhode Island Smile. There are seven communities in Rhode Island that follow the Smile program, of which Wunsaket is one. Since its founding in 1994, 3,500 students have participated in the URI Smile. Since 1998, Smile graduates in Rhode Island have attended 237 colleges and universities. The high school graduation rate for Smile students who have one or two years of experience is between 90 and 100 percent. Those students who have gone on for three years are around the 95 to 100 percent. 322 Smile alumni enrolled at URI between 1998 and 2018, over 20 years. And of those 322, 70 percent of them look for majors in STEM-related areas, science, technology, and mathematics. Engineering and mathematics, compared to around 14 percent in the regular population. I'm going to turn it over right now to our students. I think we start down here. If you want to start, go ahead. You can stand up if you want.
We begin our Smile meeting by saying the pledge. As a Smile student, I pledge to aim myself for college, to seek the best grades I can, build depth and teamwork skills, and graduate from high school with success and courage, and positively impact my community. Be a good student citizen, have good smile, and good attendance. I give my pledge.
In the fire, we studied engineering and learned about the engineering design process. The first thing to do in the design process is to imagine and or brainstorm to think about what you're going to do and how. Then you have to plan to see how you're going to make your design. Next, create your design, then test to see if it works. Even if it works, you should always improve your design to make it better. Then you can retest it.
This is our project for satellites. The challenge is that we have to make a satellite that stays in the air for five seconds or more without getting it too high or too low.
The activity that we did was the Benham's gift boat. We outbuilt the Benham's gift boat. We had to measure some tomatoes. We also had to tape the web on land. And constructing the sail was definitely difficult. We had to catch air to not look so heavy. We had to cut around the winds. We had to fold the web to. We had a lot of challenges. One of the challenges was measuring. That was pretty hard as well.
The next one is dowels and domes. We made dowels out of bend sticks and rubber bands. We also made domes with gumdrops and tulips. For the dowels, we had to fit a person in it. We also had to make a structure that could stand up by itself.
Sled. We had to make a sled. It had to be the right size. It had to hold the chocolate, but that would fall again.
A little technical difficulty, a little engineering staff here, there. We have a little fish on the sled coming down the ramp area. There we go. Thank you, Ryan. Oh, Christmas candy.
This challenge, we learned about opening closed circuits. And how we learned about that is from our challenge. When we made the robot, the challenge was that we had to make the robot that would stop and draw by itself and make it work with an open circuit.
This year has come favorable to URI and A. In these pictures, as you can see, we learned about different kinds of steam made in one instance in this slide.
When we leave to go to Alton Jones in April, the fifth grade Smile classes will go, and we will learn about burnout pools. All the fifth grade classes will be attending. EOSA stands for Elementary Outdoor Science Adventure. We will have college students as mentors, and we will do field studies in meadows and lakes. And we will also study soil type of chips and morn.
The stewardship project. In the stewardship project, we planted our garden bed, built up our school's property, and picked up waste. I personally liked this project because we got to help our community and pick up our school grounds.
Why Smile Club is important to you? Smile is important to me because it helps me learn new things and it gives me good opportunities. I get to live there and help others because of Smile. Smile teaches me to never give up. That's why Smile is important to me.
Smile is important to me because I learned why the activities that we do are challenging. I love that because I love to meet challenges so that I can hope to result that I can accomplish anything as long as I require.
I'm going to be reading this for Olivia, if we're going to make it tonight. Smile means a lot to me because being with my friends means a lot and doing challenges that are hard makes me a better person in life.
Why Smile Club is important to you? By Ariah. Smile is important to me because I learned math and science. Bottsleds were my favorite. A bottsled sled is a sled that goes on the ice. At Smile, we use a tiny box for the sled and then straws for the skis. Also after, we test them. Bye, have a nice smiling day.
Smile is important to me because I learned things that things I never understood before. For once, I never understood friction and motion, but now I think there's a smile.
Smile is important to me because it helps me learn lots of things and also it is very fun and I also love meeting all my friends and doing challenges. My Smile teachers are very nice and kind and they also help me when I don't understand a word. No. And that is why Smile is important to me.
Smile Club is important to me because I get to learn a lot of new stuff and it helps me get better at things that I can't do. In doing all of those hard challenges, I try my best. I like all of those people in the club and I like my Smile teachers. Their service is provide us with snack.
Smile is important to me because it teaches me to never give up and to keep trying. Smile also teaches me things that help me in class, like friction and motion and a lot of different things. And every Smile meeting, I learn something.
Let's give it up for Smile. And thank you, Ms. Clark. Thank you very much. That presentation was fantastic. Mr. McKinnon, your teachers, and your students were wonderful. What a great, what a great show, man. So, everybody... If anyone would like to address the school committee, announced at nine, please come to the podium. Stay tuned, and address to the register, please.
Good evening. Dear gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, all in the room. Before I begin, I came to address the school committee, but I'd like to say that presentation was very well done. And I think the city council could learn, maybe incorporate some of these presentations into our meeting.
Here we go.
Though really, what I wanted to do, first of all, Chairman and school committee members that recently got elected, I wanted to come and congratulate you for a fight well done. It was a long road to get to where you are, but I think that in the end, the cream rose to the top. And I think we have a great school committee, and I think the city is going to be well served by the five of you. And I hope that your commitment meets what was talked about during the campaign. And I think that everybody has the best interest at heart. And I just wanted to come, address you, deliver that message on behalf of the city council, and also let you know that we are available. And I would like to encourage a few joint meetings between the city council and the school committee. We have done some of those in previous years, and I found them, I personally found them to be beneficial. But I think that what we need to do is expand on the idea that we are one city and we're not the school committee and the municipal side. We're not the school department and the other people. It's one city, we're the city of Wunsaket. And I think it begins, if we can demonstrate that unity by working together, it will help all of us bridge the gaps that we have to meet. And I also hope that in doing that, you can understand some of our hardships that we're about to face, questionary-wise. And we'll be able to understand some of your shortcomings and your hopes and desires going forward. So I would like to extend that invitation. I don't expect that to happen this evening. But Chairman, if you can speak with your colleagues, and I will speak with mine, and we'll come up with a date that works for everybody and have a productive joint meeting to try and bring that unity and brings success back to Wunsaket. So thank you and congratulations.
Mr. President, on the behalf of all my colleagues, we look forward to working with the council. For last few years, we've been together to discuss our budget, but we want to do more than that. I think there's a lot going on in the city that all the administration, the council, and the school committee should be discussing. Like you said, it's one community, one city. This is all of us. We're all in the same boat. And we need to, we need to have those conversations and those discussions so we understand where some of the challenges, the big challenges are. So that's going to happen. And I'll be reaching out to you, sir.
That'd be great. And again, congratulations to everybody up there. You serve us well, and I appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would love to address the school committee?
Good evening, Jeff Barkey, Wunsaket Teachers Guild president. I always get the pleasure of beating the Debbie Downer after all the good wishes, but here I go. Tonight, I'd like to bring to your attention a serious and growing issue in this district. There are a number of incidents of violence amongst our students at each level. The issue is serious, and the remedy has many facets that need to be addressed. Today's youth are entertained by blood sport spilling over into our schools, and many students find joy in filming and posting these incidents. There are three very important issues. First, the number of fights has increased in frequency this year. Since New Year's Day at Wunsaket High School, we've had 15 fights, at least. Combatants receive discipline in the form of suspensions, but the filmmakers get no penalty. This needs to stop, as it's clear that the act of filming, in our opinion, fuels the antagonism. Second, we don't have a policy that explains what's expected of the staff in a fight. We've never been trained to break one up. We do not have designated people that are trained for this particular purpose. We're also getting older, I hate to say it, and more staff is getting hurt or at the potential to get hurt breaking up a fight. The question is simple. What's your expectation of the staff in a fight? Lastly, because we don't have a policy, when our teachers and power professionals do not know what's allowed or disallowed in a fight, the school committee recently heard a case in which there was a video of a student fight from an unsubstantiated source that was used to apply a penalty to a staff member that attempted to help the students involved. This penalty has to be for just cause, which is the intentional breaking of a policy. If we don't have a policy, how can someone be penalized for breaking that policy? All of these things greatly affect the fabric of our schools. If the committee does not institute a policy, then the staff will continue to be unsure of what they are to do in these situations. This leaves both adults and children on unsafe grounds. In short, without a policy, the risk of people being seriously hurt will continue to rise. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Barkey. Is there anyone else that would like to address the school committee? Hearing none, we will go into recognition and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to start by recognizing the wonderful students at Harris Elementary School who are part of the Smile program, Mr. McKinnon and the wonderful teachers at Harris Elementary School that provide the guidance and leadership with the students in the Smile program. Smile program is a program that's not just limited to Harris. It's across the district. We're very fortunate in each of our levels, Elementary, Middle, and High School, to have that program. I'd like to thank Lincoln Middle School and their students for donating socks to the Wunsaket Education Department for the second consecutive year. And lastly, I'd like to announce that tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the Wunsaket High School auditorium, the Wunsaket High School Underclassmen National Honor Society reduction will occur. So I will be there. I'm looking forward to that. I attend every year, and it's just a wonderful, one of many wonderful events that we have in the Wunsaket Education Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to have a motion to see and place on file the recognition and announcements. Some. Motion made by Vice Chair Burton, seconded by Mrs. Nato. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, let's go on to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the January 9, 2019, closed session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Capwell. Any corrections, additions? Dr. McGee, roll over.
Chairman Borje. Excuse me. Vice Chair Burton. Yes. Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Cadiscus.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 9, 2019, open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Capwell. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje. Yes. Vice Chair Burton. Yes. Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Cadiscus.
Next, let's go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burton. Is there any, any school member that would like to take any item away separately from the consent agenda? Any specific items? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Consent agenda passes. Next, we have school committee reports. We don't actually have reports, but we have discussions. I'll turn the Health and Wellness Subcommittee report to Vice Chair Burton.
Wow, to me already?
Already.
The Health and Wellness Subcommittee is a very active subcommittee here in Wunsaket in the case of the problem in Wunsaket School Committee. It's been playing kind of the element this past year. But as I resurrected four years ago, I will be resurrecting again with Health and Wellness Committee, too, by the way. And we're going to begin our meetings. Generally, they've been monthly meetings. We're going to begin our meetings on February 11th at 4:00 in 124 in the Hammond School. So last year, two years ago, we had a great membership, and I'm hoping some of those members, which we will notify, will turn out again as any partners of the Wellness Committee. And we've done a lot of work, too, also, with the Rhode Island Health and Wellness Collective. Or was it Coalition? Camera, whether or not. Especially helpful to us. And so we continue to work with them. So I think Chairman, that Chairman, I will just, I may point out to announce that first meeting on February 11th at 4:00 in 124 in this building. And I hope to see everybody there.
Vice Chair Burton, do we have all the other members of the committee being contacted? I know we got a list. I hope we sent out. We have?
Yeah. We have a email list of all the members of the past. And we'll put together our agenda right now, which will be published in another week.
Okay, excellent. Excellent. Next, the Facilities and Safety Committee is going to meet on February 7th at 9:00 in the Feen, and we have a long list of items to discuss. The five-year plan will be discussed. The transportation agreement will be discussed. The various other items that have been piling up recently. And so that should be a very interesting meeting, and we may have to pack a lunch. Is that right, Mr. Notaryani?
Yes, Mr. Notaryani.
Okay. That sounds very good. So we will do that on February 7th, and we will be reporting to you our next school committee meeting. Next, let's go into the financial update. Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman, as I normally do, financial update, I'm going to refer to Mr. Brad Perrier. Mr. Perrier has a memo that you can find on your phone book.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Front of you, you have the December 2018 fiscal update for Wunsaket Education Department.
Yes.
Let's talk about a few high-level things first. We'll start with the revenues. Currently, all revenues are projected to be on target for this year other than two categories. First is rental income. It's currently projected to be about $88,000 ahead of budget at time. Weds continues to work on their accounts receivable collection system. I think we made a lot of progress in that area, and now working with Director of Facilities. We're going to have some continued improvements on billing for facility expenses going forward. Also, Medicaid revenue is currently projected to be about $140,000 ahead of budget at this time. Reimbursements continue to climb through special education expenditures. Whereas right now, we have a $934,000 transfer in the balance of budget. And to kind of talk back to last month, we were at $1.17 million transfer in balance of budget. So we picked up about $236,000 over last month, based on my projections to go through the end of the fiscal year. I can talk about those and the squish shifts in the expenditure line below here. Rental salaries are currently $1.48 million under budget at this time due to the budgeting process and a amount of set aside contractual raises. And month over month, we continue to have unbilled positions. So I think as the year continues on, if we don't fill those positions, we'll continue to pick up on our salary line. Because again, how the system encounters salaries is from the minute I run the report, it considers all positions filled going forward so that I have a good maximum number that we could possibly be looking at. Kind of how we've been trending this year, we picked up, I believe, about $150,000 over one month. So that is kind of telling you the vacancies that we're looking at. Now, that's not, that's offset by our increased sub-costs because we have these vacancies at the time, so our sub-costs will go up. But I think we may continue to have pickups like this going forward as long as those positions remain unfilled. Currently, medical expenses are $1.35 million over budget. Currently, medical expenses are $1.35 million over budget. This has been an improvement over last year, but December is typically our lowest expense of year for medical claims, just because the Christmas season, not a lot of people utilizing the doctors. And I've kind of been tracking as January goes on, we've kind of spiked back up to where we were originally. So I don't think that, that savings is going to be long-term at this point. I did make an adjustment to a purchase order for unemployment. We were a little over encumbered there, so we picked up about $100,000, kind of projecting unemployment going forward. I think a lot of people will be falling off in December, so our payments for unemployment should be pretty, pretty low, January through June, kind of looking at where we're going through. At this time, due to the overages of medical expense, our OPEF continues to not be encumbered this time, so we're going to use that, a little over half a million dollars to offset some of that loss or that overdone medical this time. As we reported last month, both transportation and out-of-district tuition still over budget. We have had a little bit of improvement though in both those areas, so hopefully going forward, we'll continue to do the best we can bringing back students and reducing out-of-district transportation costs. We had a slight uptick in expenditures for HVAC. We saw a couple more that improved here tonight on the consent agenda. I believe we are going to be talking about HVAC particularly at that Facility Subcommittee meeting, kind of get into what the core issues are there, and put together a little bit of a presentation as to how we want to tackle these things going forward. And finally, we are in the process of opening up a purchase order for the additional school resource officers that have begun working in the district. We've estimated about $40,000 expense for that for the rest of this year at this time. Now, that leaves, as noted in my memo, that leaves us with a $1.16 million deficit for the general fund, but that's just really the budget to actual expenditures this time. If you take in the additional revenue, it's really more of a $934,000 overall deficit that we're running as of December. I continue to see some savings on salaries, and again, we continue to hope that medical will get better, but as the months tick by and I see these bills coming in, continual $250,000 to $350,000 range per week, you know, as the clock, clock thing ticks down, these savings are going to be less and less, even if we do have a turnaround in the near future. So if anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Well, Mr. Perrier, just some observations. We've taken transferred all of our reserves, our contingencies, not going to be $34,000 or close to the budget deficit yet.
Correct.
So if you take that out, really, the operations this year are running in a deficit of about $934,000.
Absolutely.
As of this summer.
Correct.
Our budget is established for the year, so it's not like we're going to disenumber any expenditures, or we're going to look at, oh, we're going to do so much better in the next six months, so let's, let's pull all these expenditures out, and let's look, and it's going to look like roses. That's not what we're doing. We're going to keep the same number, and what we budgeted, we have no idea in the next few months if medical will go through the roof, whether or not we bring in new students that need aid in transportation. We have no idea what's going to happen with those HVACs, because we've got people on site tonight, and we've had them during the week, and this is a major problem that we have. As we've discussed, the HVAC systems that might have been put into the middle schools and maybe other places, really might not have been the ones we wanted. Maybe we went a little low, maybe the quality wasn't there, I know we're investigating this, but we've got some, some really interesting and maybe very expensive items that we're going to have to spend during the next few months. So the budget that we're holding, we know we're over, it's, it's about a million dollar deficit right now. Sure, we covered it with reserve, but it's still a not very big deficit. It's taking away from the reserves that we've got on our balance sheet, so I want to caution everybody that these numbers all have been improved since the last time. There's no guarantee that these numbers are not old, because next month, we could have a whole brand-new, a whole brand-new story. And what is good news is that we monitor these numbers every single month, we compare them to budget, we compare them to the prior year, and then we make decisions accordingly. So this is very interesting, and I would like to see that the deficit, that we do somewhat, but we're still way under water. You know, so suburbia, it's 1,000, 1,500 feet, you convert it to 1,000 feet. Well, now that Harris Elementary...
It's not even that high, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's not even 1,000 feet yet, maybe 1,200, 1,300.
So there we are. So this is not, there's no guarantee that we're going to see a break even in operations this year due to medical, due to the out-of-district placements, due to some of the years that we have to do in transportation costs. So it's something that we're going to, you know, really look very closely at, and as we do every single month. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burton.
Thank you. I was a little concerned here from Mr. Perrier that there are several unfilled positions. Where are those positions? How many? What's going on there?
I can take this one. So providing areas, they're mainly in special education. We have a lot of special education positions that are unfilled, not for lack of trying. We've been posting, we've been, you know, looking to find qualified candidates who apply Chief Vogel, our HR, Acting HR Director, who worked really hard with Dr. Sullivan and with Dawn Morell to try to fill as many of those positions. We also have, as you know, Chief Vogel, who is our Acting Human Resources and Labor Relations Director, so that's a position as well, in addition to Ms. Quatene's position, retired in June, which is the Director of Facilities Transportation and Safety and Security. So there's a variety of those resources at the moment.
So any of the teaching staff, the special ed?
Correct.
How about the regular, excuse me, regular classroom, vehicles that we've been checking?
We, we have some folks that are in long-term positions. We have some teaching staff. Long-term subs, exactly.
Dr. McGee, just a corollary to that. Do we have people in the pipeline that are interviewing some of these spots right now? Or is this not looking, but there's really no candidates available?
I believe in some instances, we do have some potential candidates that we're going to be interviewing. So yes, I can't give you the specific number now, I can certainly get that number to you too, to you and the Marine Committee tomorrow, but yes, so there are some.
I guess the question really, the question to ask is, well, how are we doing with just providing the education we need? We have, you know, a million four, and I don't know how many people that is and where they are, but how, how is that, how are the needs of our students being met? I mean, that's, that's the real question.
Yes, well, I, you go on and on with that. Mr. Chairman, that, that million four, that's, that's not all just because of unfilled positions. There's a large chunk of that that was set aside for contractual raises this year, and it just hasn't been applied yet.
How much, how much is that, Mr. Perrier? Roughly?
It's around $1 million, $800,000 to $1 million. A million dollars for all salaries.
So what, you said about $400,000?
Correct.
All right, and that translates into how many people?
Well, you have to actually knock out the quarter million dollars in our employee turnover as well.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a handful of TA's and a handful of teaching positions.
Okay, so it's not, the last population ought to be...
No, we're not a hundred, we're not down a hundred. We're not talking about dozens and dozens, we're talking about a handful.
Okay.
So it's, it's not all due to that surplus, that's not all due to unfilled positions.
Okay, that's good to hear. Let's talk to Vice Chair Burton, so that... Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Nato.
Can someone tell me the requirement to become a TA in Wood Sock?
So you, you either have to have an associate's degree, or you have to be a graduate of Teacher Assistant Program, which I believe CCRI offers in their other, I think the Collaborative, the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative also provides those, those courses. So there are a couple avenues that we, you know, we can select candidates from.
So you don't have an in-house program for TA's?
We don't, however, we just had, I just had a meeting recently with the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative, and they're looking to start more professional development opportunities for, A, for teacher assistants that are currently working in districts, and also to provide prospective teacher assistants to get them into, into the courses. And I know that Dawn Morell and Dr. Sullivan have been speaking to the Collaborative about possibly having some of those classes here in Wood Sock, which would make it more convenient for, A, the teacher assistants that are currently working in the district, and B, for any resident of Wood Sock who might want to become certified as a teacher assistant. So we're looking to do that here within the school department.
Okay, because years ago, we had an in-house program for teacher assistants, where we would have somebody from every category, every level of special ed involved, the people that are actually doing the job, kind of thing, and it worked very well.
Yeah, I recall that, and it is something that we're looking to resurrect, because, you know, as you know and the committee knows, we have, we're having a really difficult time filling our teacher assistant positions, not just in Wood Sock, as I speak, other superintendents in the region, they're also having some great difficulty as well. So we're going to hopefully take advantage of what the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative is offering, and the fact that they're willing to, you know, move some of those classes here in Wood Sock, I think might be, might be helpful as well.
Do you think one of the other reasons is that the salary scale for the responsibilities is very low?
I, I think that in, in general, across the state, the salary scale for teacher assistants is low, yes, I think that definitely has something to do with it.
Yeah, because if you go and get an associate's degree, and you want to become a teacher assistant, and you look around, and you've got skills, you probably won't go in that direction.
Exactly.
Okay, that's always been a problem as a teacher assistant, you're underpaid then, so it's really hard. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Perrier, thank you very much for your presentation, report as always, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burton, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Still you, Dr. McGee. It's the school support system report.
Wait, wait until a few minutes, because it's really the obvious. So, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think some of the members of the committee are aware, I don't think everyone is aware, that every five years, the Department of Education comes into school districts, and they basically, when it comes down to the audit of the special education services and department in the system. This year, they are coming in to do a, a school support system visit, and Ms. Dawn Morell, who is District Special Ed Coordinator, is going to just update the committee on what the visit is, what, you know, what's going to happen, and what, you know, what we're going to hopefully garner from the recommendations and the results that they file on the visit. Thank you, Mrs. Morell.
So the purpose of the visit is to provide a means of accountability for delivery of programs and services for students with disabilities. First part of the visit is the orientation meeting, where we plan the site reviews for the schools that they're going to visit, and we also identify any issues that we may have within the district that we might see up front. Next is a data analysis meeting. RIDE reviews information from reports, staff questionnaires, parent interviews. They take 20 students' records, and they do an extensive record review, and the records are picked at random, and they also interview the parents of the students' records, teachers and service providers, and they also do observations of the students within the classroom. Following that is the site review and an LEA presentation. So Dr. Sullivan and myself will do a presentation for the members of RIDE on our program that we have in our district from pre-K to 12, and our transition program. And then they will conduct a week-long site review at the various schools that were selected. At this present time, it's the high school, WAC Tech, Canla and Villan Open Middle School, Vernon Heights, Low Park, and Pootier and Citizens Campus, and RIDE will interview the staff at those locations. After the site reviews, there's a support plan that is put together. The data that has been collected throughout the week is used to generate the reports, including compliance with regulations, quality of programs and services, and the need for professional development and technical assistance. From there, the school support system report is developed, and then they will present that out to our staff, and the final report will summarize their findings in four different divisions. One is the indicators, findings that they may have, documentation of where they found the findings, and the last part of the plan is the response to the findings that could have a corrective action plan if needed. And that summarizes the plan.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I was just, just a question. So if findings, if you get observations, and you create a corrective action plan, do they come back, say, a year later or six months later, to understand how you've implemented and then essentially affected the corrective action plan? Or is it, we developed, and five years later, they come back?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I can get that information for you, but I want to say that with the corrective action plan, we have to write a plan, submit it, and then we have to show that we're working towards that plan. But they do come back every five years, and I want to say they're going to review what we did five years ago. Okay, thank you.
I agree with that. And so it depends whether it's a compliance finding or a qualitative finding, so it really depends on the severity of the issue, but if you're, if the district is out of compliance and is not acting lawfully, then you'll be put on a very tight timeframe that can vary from 30 days, 90 days, six months. But those, I have to say, are unusual.
Well, let me just ask, how fast do we get the report? So that, once they have the site findings, write the report, do they communicate their findings during the site review, only after, as they...
So it's, it's a little bit like an audit.
Okay.
You know, you, you get information as it's ongoing, because the RIDE does not want to get something wrong.
Right.
And, and so they'll say, we're not seeing any X, is that true? So you'll, you'll know as the visit progresses.
Okay.
But you also won't be in all of the interviews. So like Donna was saying, the interviews with students and parents, you won't have access to those, so you kind of have, some of it, you're sitting on pins and needles waiting for the, the findings, but it's, it is handled like an audit, where you'll get a preliminary report and get the comment on it, or...
And this is going to take place when?
So our first orientation meeting is February 8. The site review, where they go into the schools, is the week of March 18th to the 21st, and we're projected to get the final report around May 20.
That's the final report, will there be a preliminary report? Do you know?
Um, that I don't know.
It'll be an exit interview.
It will, okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chairman, superintendent, on this visit here, do we treat them like a NEAS visit? Do we have to house these people? Do we have to feed them? Is there a, the whole thing that's involved with it, as NEAS?
So we don't have to feed them, but we do have to provide them with a confidential space, so they, at each of the buildings, so when they hold the interviews, it's completely confidential, no one's going to walk in on the teacher giving the interviews, as well as parents or anything.
I'm sure we've done this before, so we have something we have to...
Any other comments?
I have one, Mr. Jay. Do you, I noticed that there are all public schools that are identified. Are out-of-district placements part of a school support visitor? Do they get their own?
So the 20 students' record reviews that they've kept are various students, some are out-of-district, some are at the parochial schools, so they've tried to pick various disabilities and various grades, so they're all over.
So if the student, for example, at the high school, would that, would be matriculated at the high school as an out-of-district placement, they would be part of this leave school support visit?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the non-Phelps are actually visited annually, and they're accredited and licensed by RIDE, so it's a separate parallel structure. It's actually, in some ways, more stringent.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the school support system report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we don't have any finished business, no new business. Dr. McGee?
This is a quick one, Mr. Chairman. So again, I have a powerfully presentation.
Yes.
Let me go through.
Do you want us, we have to watch you.
Mine.
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
So you're going to compare this to the student.
That's right. You better get this good.
Pressure, pressure.
Is that Dr. McGee anywhere?
Uh, the screen is going to be pretty close if you're sitting there. Kind of like when you go to the movies and there are no seats in the back. You have to sit right at the front. Are we ready? So as I stated previously, I had planned, and I'm going to do this evening, to go over the, some basic information about the Rhode Island Accountability System, specifically the new state assessment, which is the RIDE-CAS assessment. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the assessment itself, and then I'm going to go into the, the components that the Department of Ed uses with respect to accountability in both schools and districts. And I'm also going to share with you just some, some cursory proficiency percentages this evening as well. What I would like to do, once we finish this this evening, and we start to move forward into the month of February, is I would like to schedule a workshop where we can really go into the disaggregated data that we're collecting here in the district for each school. So I'm not going to go through all of that disaggregated data this evening, but I will be looking to schedule that, that workshop. So just to give you a little history of accountability in Rhode Island. Those of you that remember, in 2010, the adoption of the Common Core state standards began here in Rhode Island. The Common Core standards were adopted most, through most of all of the states in the U.S. in, in 2010. If you fast forward to the assessments that have been used in Rhode Island, I don't have them here, I have the PARK here, but prior to the PARK, the assessments were the NECAP, those, you do that, recall those. That assessment, prior to that, we had the new standards. So those were the standards that were used to assess what students could do, can be able to do, know and do. But the PARK assessment, um, was used from 2014, 2015, from 2016 and 2017. Fast forward to where we are now, and last year was the first year that Rhode Island utilized the RIDE-CAS assessment. And the RIDE-CAS assessment began, started last year. This year will be our second full year with the RIDE-CAS assessment. RIDE-CAS assessment includes the PSAT and the SAT assessments for high school students, and I'll get into that in a little greater detail in a few minutes. So why did Rhode Island transition to the RIDE-CAS? Well, first, the PARK consortium, as I said a few moments ago, initially, there were 24 states across the country that utilized the PARK. We currently are down to about six states, might even be lower than that. So not every state used the PARK assessment. And as we've seen over the last handful of years, more and more states are coming away from the PARK assessment, either creating their own assessments, you know, so on and so forth. So as a result, in the decrease, Rhode Island decided to align with what Massachusetts is using, which is the NCAS. Massachusetts being a global leader in education, you know, they were ranked number one in the nation. We allowed the state to maintain the same learning standards. So by utilizing the RIDE-CAS or going to what Massachusetts is using, we don't have to change the standards that we're currently teaching to in our schools. So the Common Core state standards are staying the same. The RIDE-CAS is, is created based on those, those standards. So there's going to be no change there, which is, which is a good thing. And the state was just looking to see how Rhode Island compares to Massachusetts, given the fact that this is our first year and Massachusetts has been, you know, utilizing the NCAS for 20, 25 years. So those are the, some of the reasons that Rhode Island decided to transition from the PARK assessment to RIDE-CAS.
Just a, just a question. If we're going to compare Massachusetts to we, because Rhode Island know exactly what the Massachusetts schools are doing, do they teach the exam, the assessment, or how they prepare their students for the assessment?
So that, so that's another piece to this. That's the curriculum needs.
Of course.
And so, so we're not there yet. Massachusetts has had many years, and Mr. Burke is certainly, certainly, certainly aware of this, having been an educator in Massachusetts for many decades. Massachusetts has had an opportunity to, to, to use the same assessment, the same test, and to really align their curriculum to that test, so that students, what they're, what they're being taught in the classroom is directly, you know, corresponding to the, to the standards. So I'm going to get into the actual RIDE-CAS itself. So there are measures that the state uses to evaluate school performance, right? So just recently, we had basically, each school in the state, their school report cards were with each district report card. So the measures that, that RIDE uses for, to evaluate school performance are three areas. So there are three performance areas. In the past, the, the NECAP only assessed, in that process, really only assessed proficiency. Right? No child left behind. If you think back to years ago, by 2014, every child was going to be proficient. What the, what, what this assessment, what, what the RIDE-CAS assessment is, that the PARK wasn't, and that the NECAP wasn't, is it's a holistic type of way of evaluating how schools are performing, how students are performing. So there are three areas, three areas of measurement. Academic performance, student success, college and career readiness. Each of these three measures has components, and those components are measured. So under academic performance, you're looking at student achievement, student achievements, student achievement in the area of math, and student achievement in the area of reading. Growth, are students growing from one year to the next when they take the assessment? Are they improving? Are they not improving? Are they stagnant? English language proficiency. We have about 10% of our students here in this district who are English, English language learners. That's also a component of the academic performance, which our district and our schools, that have enough students in that particular category are being measured. The science is something that we're not being assessed in yet. That's going to happen at some point in the future. So for now, under academic performance, we're looking at achievement, student growth, and English language proficiency. When you look at the second measure, student success, this is where it becomes more holistic, like I was talking about earlier. So what's being measured is student absenteeism, specifically chronic absenteeism. And we all know that student chronic absenteeism is a student that is absent from school for whatever reason, whether it's an excused absence, a suspension, what have you, for 10% of the school year, which comes out in 18 days. They're also looking at teacher absenteeism. Again, chronic teacher absenteeism. Same, um, the same type of a, of a component, but just looking at teachers. Teachers, obviously, for students to be successful, teachers have to be in school regularly. Right? I mean, if, if a teacher is chronically absent, then those are hours, those hours are added up of instruction that those students are really losing. Because, let's face it, a substitute teacher isn't going to provide the quality instruction that, that the classroom teacher is going to provide to students. Suspension rate is another component of student success. And then the fourth bullet here is, are students who are exceeding expectations? So on the, the RIDE-CAS, students score from a 1 to a 4, a 4 being exceeding proficiency. So schools that have students that exceed expectations receive more index points for that particular component of that measure. And then finally, college and career readiness, specific to high students at this point in time, is they look at graduation, at the graduation rate. So I'm going to take each one of these separately and talk a little bit, in a little bit greater detail, as to what exactly this means. So the first measure, again, the academic measure. The components are, as I said, achievement, growth, English language proficiency, and the science proficiency. So if we take achievement, the way achievement is measured for these students is through the RIDE-CAS, through the DLM and the SAT. So the DLM are for our students who are in alternate assessment settings, who are taking, they're not taking the RIDE-CAS, they're taking the alternate assessment. So we have many special needs students in our district that take that assessment. And the SAT, as I said earlier, is what's going to be used to measure proficiency for students at the high school. Students included in achievement. So all students in grades 3 through 8 will be taking the RIDE-CAS. There will be some students, however, that are alternate assessment students in grades 3 through 8 that would be taking the, the DLM. But for the most part, we're looking at grades 3 through 8. The SAT is given specifically to students in the 11th grade. So at the high school, students are not taking the RIDE-CAS, they're taking the SAT, PSAT. The years that are included, so what they've done to, to, to measure the achievement is they've basically taken the last two years, compared the achievement over the last two years, which would be the last year of the PARK, which is two years ago, and the first year, which would be last year of the, of the RIDE-CAS. So when you look at achievement, and also growth, which I'm going to get to in a second, when schools are issued the report cards, and I'm going to get into this in a few minutes, they're issued a series of stars, one through five stars. So any school that is found to be in the lowest 5% of schools within the state when it comes to overall student achievement, okay, are identified as comprehensive support and improvement schools. I'll get into that in a few moments as well. So if you go down to the next section, growth, again, that's growth comparing students' scores from one year to another, because growth is just as important as proficiency. We want all of our students to be proficient, but they're not all going to be proficient if they're not showing growth. So again, the way the growth is measured is through the RIDE-CAS. Again, they've, they've taken this last year's RIDE-CAS, and they've compared it to the last year of the PARK assessment. It's going to be much more of an apples-to-apples and an orange-to-orange comparison next year, because we'll have had one year of the RIDE-CAS assessment. And PSAT and SAT, again, that is our high school students. And I, I basically just talked about that, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk about that right now. But, and again, comprehensive support and improvement, any school that is in the lowest 5% of schools in the state when it comes to achievement of students and growth of students would be classified as a comprehensive school. We have one school in the district that's, that's comprehensive, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. English language proficiency, our students who are English language learners take an assessment called the ACCESS Assessment. That is, again, measured over the course of two years, and it measures the growth based on students' English language proficiency to the prior year. So it's, it's measured from one year to the next. The science proficiency, again, that's something that is not currently being done, but that is something that RIDE and the state is going to be adding as, as another measurement in the next few years or so. Student success, and so this is the second measure. Again, looking at treating students holistically. So student chronic absenteeism, again, we're measuring all students. It's one year, so you're not comparing year to year with this. You're taking each year individually. So the, the data that we received most recently was from last year's data. So they looked at the number, the percentage of students across the district in each of our schools that are chronically absent. And again, that's 10% or more of the school year, which comes out to 18 or more days during the year. Also looking at teacher absenteeism, again, it's not measured as a comparison, but it's year to year. Suspension rate is also taken into consideration, and that's measured from year to year as well. And then those that exceed academic expectations, as I said, anyone that scores a 4, which means they've exceeded the, the expectations, schools are given a certain number of index points for that as well, so that they can then, you know, provide the, the community and the district with, with the report card for each one of the schools. And lastly, college and career readiness, we're looking, again, at the high school. We have one high school in the district, so we're looking at graduation rates. The good news, the, the bad news is we have a 73%. That's early indications that we, we received from RIDE. The good news is that we are continually, are, are continuously moving in an upward direction. So we started at 59% about four or five years ago, and I know the high school, Mr. Henderson and his leadership team, and the teachers and staff here are working really hard.
Well, we were 66 last year.
We were 66 last year.
Yeah.
And this is, this is the senior class, should be the first class that begin with the seven dollars?
Should be. Yeah, they started that about four years ago.
We'll see if that will, right, has.
That's right, successful, one oh one. Exactly, exactly. So here in Woodsocket, when you look at the percentage, what I've done here is I, I have three columns. First, the school column. Secondly, the percent of students that are proficient in English language arts, and the percentage of students who are proficient in math. So Woodsocket High School, again, that's the PSAT, PSAT. 32% of the students were, were seen to be proficient, and 14% in math. I'm, I'm not going to go through every single one of these. I'm going to leave this up for you to look at, and if you have any questions, you know, I will do my best to answer them. I will bring you down here to Pothier, however, because Pothier is, is not a grade 3 through 5 elementary school. So if you look at Holman Harris, Citizens, Vernon, Lowes, Boyd, those are all grades 3 through 5. And as I said earlier, RIDE-CAS is taken by students in grades 3 through 8. So you would say, well, how is Pothier scored? Because they, they don't, they don't have third-grade students. What they do is they take the, they take the third-grade students from Citizens, because they're on the same campus. So the Pothier students, when they complete second grade, go to Citizens. So they use the third-grade score to, to provide the proficiency and the growth as well for Pothier. And we've had that conversation, Mrs. DiRiso and I have had a conversation with the Deputy Commissioner and RIDE, and so she sort of explained to us, because it, it sort of seems unfair that, that they're.
They shouldn't even be in there.
Taking a hit, if you will, but it, but it's still those students, those students were still instructed, prior to them taking the assessment in third grade, they were Pothier students. So that's. students. So that's, so any, any elementary school in the state that is an early childhood facility, you know, K through, pre-K through grade two, that's how that measurement is taken.
Patrick, so what you're saying is Pothier is based on what last year, what would have been second grade, because the testing has third graders.
Right, right, exactly. I have some data here that I can share with you that I don't have up there, just to give you a sense of statewide percentages and comparing us to Massachusetts. Now, you know, and I didn't really delve into this too much initially, but across the state, the proficiency percentage and the growth was not good. Now, I'm not making excuses for La Socket at all. We've got a lot of work to do, and shortly, I'm going to share with you some of the positive things that we've been doing, where we have seen improvement, and we have seen growth in the district. But the state in general didn't do very well this first time around, I think for a variety of reasons. You know, one being the fact that it's the fourth state assessment that our students have been exposed to in, you know, fifteen years or so, eighteen years. So it's hard to, it's hard not to compare ourselves to Massachusetts, because you can throw a baseball into Massachusetts, and, but yet, it's unfair right now, I think, to compare ourselves to Massachusetts, because they've had twenty, twenty-five years to really work at this. So anyway, that's my unsolicited commentary.
And they've got Mr. Burke, and they have Mr. Burke.
And they had teachers like Mr. Burke there, too. But if you look at Massachusetts versus Rhode Island this past year in ELA, and this is just proficiency, they ranged, their schools ranged from fifty-one to fifty-four percent. Rhode Island was twenty-four to forty percent. And in math, Massachusetts ranged from forty-six percent to fifty percent, in Rhode Island, twenty-three to thirty-five percent. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do, but I'm hopeful that we're on the right course, and that, you know, the Department of Education has really worked hard to, to at least start working towards something where, you know, if we all can stay the course, then I really believe we're going to see success, you know, in years to come. We just have to make sure it at least stays the course.
Based on your discussions with superintendents across the state, is there any discussion about maybe our curricula are not as rigorous as they should be?
Well, there's, there's been talk about, about a universal curricula that all districts, you know, follow, for example, and I'll, you know, talk about this later, but some of the programs that we use, you know, we use foundations for our students, for our K through grade two students for learning their, you know, their basic reading skills. We use STEM scopes for science, we use Eureka math, so, but not every district in the state uses the same.
Right.
Programs, right? We have the same, we have the same standards, but it doesn't mean that we're using the same curriculum. The curriculum is just one piece of, the standards are just one piece of the curriculum. Curriculum is made up of a variety of things, but that is something that's being discussed.
One more unfair question. We have our numbers, if we, I don't know if you can, or RIC has done that, if you yanked out the kids, the students that were chronically absent at all the schools, and pull out their scores and use everyone else's, I wonder how we would stack up, because as we know, if you attend, you do better. So it would be interesting to know how successful we are with the kids that show up, because that's just a whole kit and caboodle. That doesn't really tell us.
Right.
How effective.
Well, it's a good question, it is. And I, my sense is that, you know, the students that are regular attenders, probably, we would see, you know, greater proficiency. I think we would certainly see greater growth, because they're there, they're exposed to the teaching, they're exposed to the curriculum. So I would think that we probably would.
I look at these smile kids that came up tonight. See, they've got it invested, they've invested in their education, the parents are behind them. I would imagine if you take all those kids, and all the ones that show up at school and really working hard, I bet you their scores are much higher than what we're seeing across the board here for our district. And it would be interesting to know, and I would think the teachers would want to know that, you know what, we're pretty successful for the kids that show up, the kids who attend.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be nice to have those.
You're right, you're right. And as part of, as one of the three measures, attendance, chronic absence is one, and I think here in La Socket, we really perk hard, really hard, to make sure kids are coming to school.
Wouldn't you want to see those numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I don't know if we can get them, but I'll tell you, it sounds like we got to dig or, you know, spade and a pick at the numbers, but it would be very interesting to see where, how effective, one, teaching is, second, how well our kids are doing, because this is, including all those chronic absentees.
Sure.
I think it'd be valuable for us to know that.
Right.
I was also going to say that you obviously explained why RIC has difficulty with some of their test laws, because they have not been consistent. They change their mind every other year, have a new assessment, or this would be the accountability we need. It has to be consistent, it has to be consistent. And you also may see, and it's also been voiced, that there's an expectation this year that Massachusetts scores may go down, because we've got a new test. It's not just the MCAS anymore.
Two point zero.
It's the MCAS two point zero, which is just parked with MCAS together, right? Made by the same company, Pearson, so. But there's an expectation that, you know, and we're working with our own ninth and tenth graders, for them, this is the first time they're going to do it on a computer, which is another challenge right there.
Yeah.
So, RIC has to be consistent, now, they're going to be consistent ten years, you know? And they keep changing, thinking that that's going to be the answer, but somewhere, I believe, consistency has to come.
And districts have to remain consistent.
Districts have to remain consistent, too.
With programs that they use. You know, this is the, I don't know, fourth year that we've been using Wilson Foundations, you know, it's the fourth or fifth year that we've been using Eureka. We just implemented a new reading curriculum in grades K through five, so, you know, this, so we've got to stay focused versus changing things up every few years. Teachers have to relearn, you know, curricula, they have to relearn different programs, and it makes it challenging.
And that was essentially leading into what I was going to say, is it must be frustrating and disheartening as a teacher to have so many changes and then have the direct results of those changes in all the work you're doing be resulting in less than favorable results. And just, you know, how is the message from the top down, are you helping to keep them motivated, I guess, and understanding that these changes, even though resulting in, again, unfavorable results, is something that, I guess, is too certain that you understand that it's the impact of constant change on them.
You're right, I mean, we all have to stay the course and stay focused.
Dr. McGee, excuse me, would you speak? I don't want to say speak into the mic, I'm not going to do that. Radio audience would love to hear.
They haven't heard what I've said. They didn't hear anything since I said good evening, did they? How about if I do this?
Well done.
How about if I do this? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. You might be going to throw off my mojo here.
Maybe.
Okay.
But we'll see, we'll see, we'll see what you got.
That's right. So, getting into the star ratings, so all of the information I just gave you, those, those measures and components, each of those is given index scores, and I'm not going to even try to get into that, because what the index scores ultimately provide schools with a star rating. So it goes from a one star to a five star. One star is being the lowest performance in terms of achievement and growth for graduations, because there are, hey, there are high schools that are one-star schools. Up to strong performance on all indicators. So here in La Socket, our ratings are as follows. So Leo Savoy is classified as a three-star school. The high school, Villanova, Hamlet Middle Schools, Coleman, Globe, and Citizens are two-star schools. Pothier, Vernon Heights, and Harris are categorized as one-star schools. Now, Harris is the one school in the district that, and I'll talk about this here in a moment, is a comprehensive school, and I'll tell you what that means. So at each school, we also, some of the data that we receive from the RICAS is, we learn which areas are most affected by the star ratings. That's English language proficiency right there. So it just sort of tells you the school and which categories, whether it's, again, achievement, growth, proficiency, graduation, where they're most affected. The next slide, this slide are the targeted subgroups. So within each school, there are subgroups of students, right? You get an overall score, if you will, proficiency and growth, but you also have targeted subgroups. And for schools to, when schools are rated, these subgroups are taken into consideration. So if you have subgroups that are not doing well, your school would be in need of support. So what we have here in this first column are all our schools and the targeted subgroups where the students are not being as successful as we would like. So it goes from African-Americans, Hispanic, two or more races, white, economically disadvantaged, English language learners, and students with disabilities. So this tells us, basically, what subgroups we need to be focusing on in each school. That's basically what we can glean from this. And as.
What does two or more races mean?
It means that when the student, the family completes the form where they are to put, you know, what race are you, they, well, they, yeah, they check off two or more. Right. So again, each school, when they're looking at their data, and have they been doing this, we're going to be working with each principal as we move forward, they're going to be targeting, looking at these targeted subgroups when they come up with their action plans and steps that they're going to be creating to address the situation. So how do we improve? So RIC, as I said, has identified one of our elementary schools as a comprehensive support and improvement school, that's Paris Elementary. We recently had a meeting with the commissioner, commissioner was in attendance, the deputy commissioner was in attendance, and they gave us a lot of information that we're going to be using as we move forward to try to create plans for Harris and for even our other schools. Even though all of our schools are not comprehensive schools, we can still take this work and just transfer it to some of our other schools, because quite obviously, every school has to improve. But specifically at Harris, so in more, so we're going to be working with the Department of Ed, and we're going to be looking to take the following steps. A, to build a school improvement framework, which includes leadership-driven initiatives to facilitate rapid improvement, improve climate and culture in working toward a common goal, and talent development and collaboration, and high-quality materials and instruction. So we're going to be looking to address each of these areas, both at Harris Elementary and all of our schools, when we start to put these plans together. Specific to Harris, so any school that is classified as a comprehensive support and improvement school has to develop what's called a community advisory board, they call it a CAF. And a community advisory board is a group of people from the community, both within the school and outside of the school, but are in the immediate vicinity, if you will, or community of that school, which will work together to conduct a needs assessment and a root cause analysis. So what are the needs, what's going on, and what are the causes of what's happening? So what are the causes of students not showing growth in ELA, right? One of the root causes could be, well, when we look at the data, ninety percent of the students that didn't show growth are chronically absent, as you said, Mr. Porje. So we've got to look at not just assessing the problem, but how do we address the problem? What's causing these things to happen? So this community advisory board will be putting together the needs assessment and the root cause analysis.
Will you put that board together?
So Mr. McKinnon is going to be sending out a letter to the parents and the community members within Harris, Harris's district. And we're going to see any parents or anyone from the community who would be willing to come in and serve on this board. And we're also going to just sort of ourselves go out to, you know, to folks, whether it be some of the faith-based organizations in the area, some of the businesses in the area, to see if they would be willing to work with us to develop, to look at the needs assessment and come up with the root cause analysis, in addition to folks within the school. So it's not exclusive of the staff that are working with students every day.
No, I think it's excellent, you got to get the parents involved, especially if the school is in New Orleans.
So in addition to the members that are going to name up the bulk of the advisory board, how does it go at the top-down, is there a parent committee, is there a parent work that you're provided, how is it?
So one of the first things that we'll do is, once we establish this board, is we're going to make a decision as to which assessment we're going to use. The Department of Ed gave us a variety of assessments to use to start the process. So this group will be working together to start that process. That was one of the, that's one of the nice things about the Department of Ed and their ESAP plan, their Every Student Succeeds Act plan that they had to submit to the federal government, is that they want this not to be a top-down, not RIC telling districts what to do and how to do it, but RIC working with districts and the districts, the leaders within the district coming together and creating these plans. We're going to be looking, as we're looking at the root cause analysis, and as we are looking at creating these plans for improvement, we're going to be selecting evidence-based interventions. And evidence-based interventions are interventions that have been proven to work in other districts, whether it's here in Rhode Island, across the country, internationally. It's not just saying, oh, this, we're going to come up with an idea just because it seems like a good program to run. We have to have evidence that we've utilized evidence-based interventions when we do select what we're going to use to help support and to improve our students. And then lastly, there will be some grant monies available for improvement efforts. So schools can receive anywhere from fifteen, I think they said anywhere from fifteen to fifty or so thousand dollars for this work, and those will be schools that are considered to be comprehensive support and improvement schools as well. So, all schools in the district are going to be participating in some form of an improvement plan. They won't necessarily be as comprehensive as the one that Harris is going to be creating, but each school will be conducting an in-depth needs assessment, identifying equity gaps and root causes. So when I say equity gaps, I mean gaps between different classifications or subgroups of students. What we find here in La Socket, and I think most districts find, is there's an equity gap when you look at the performance of students with disabilities versus students that do not have disabilities. When you look at students who are a limited English proficiency versus students who are not. So we're going to be looking at those areas, those subgroups, when we make our determinations as to, you know, what we're going to be focusing on. Schools will use the plans to develop a comprehensive school improvement plan. So currently, all of our schools in the district have school improvement plans. So the work that will be done based on these results will be incorporated into the school improvement plans in each of our schools as we move forward. They'll be selecting strategies to align to their equity gaps and root causes, and we'll be creating, as you normally do, when you create a school improvement plan, you look at milestones. you, you look at milestones for implementation, you set benchmarks. And lastly, schools will monitor the progress of the plan throughout the year and analyze it. So you establish a plan and you don't just leave it alone. You continue to evaluate it and look to see if you're actually making progress along the way. You don't wait until the end of the school year and say, oh, you know, our students, um, may grow or their proficiency improved. You, you measure it as you're going along. Lastly, what I, what I'd like to end on, because I even know it, you know, Mr. Parton, I'm going to, I'm going to quote Mr. Parton tonight. I don't want to be a Debbie Downer all night. But, um, so, so there are a lot of really good things we're doing here in the district. And I, I know that most people sitting here are aware of some of the things that we're doing. But we really are and we really have been working very hard, you know, over the last five years. We've been working to improve our pre-K transition kindergarten. You know, I know the governor, um, her, her focus is, is on, um, early childhood education. And it, it's critical for students when they enter kindergarten, to enter kindergarten with some basic skills. So we've been working hard. Mrs. DiRiso has been working with our, um, our, our local Head Starts to, to increase opportunities for our students as they enter kindergarten. We are, are also, um, are in conversation with the Department of Ed to try to increase our opportunities that we have in the district for universal pre-kindergarten. We currently only have, uh, pre-kindergarten at, um, Hope Year Elementary School and that's for students, um, with, with special needs. So we have a total of four classrooms, which each classroom is, um, is a half-day. So we have a total of eight, eight classes, but they're half-day. So we're looking to increase that number as we move forward. There's a grant that Dr. Sullivan and, and myself and, uh, and Dawn Morel and Mary Barre with Head Start in the socket are going to be looking at, also in conjunction with, um, Mrs. DiRiso, to, uh, to try to increase the number of, of pre-Ks that we have. Historically, early intervention data has reflected more at-risk students exiting kindergarten than entering. Last year, we saw for the first time students who were exiting kindergarten that were actually, um, more prepared to enter the first grade than we've seen. And that's just been through a lot of hard work, uh, working with some of the coaches that we, um, we've hired over the last few years. Coaches are going in and working with kindergarten teachers and providing them with assistance and instruction. Talk about growth. And we've, we've had this conversation at some school committee meetings last year. Mr. Porche and even I think Mr. Burke, you might remember in the past, some of the platforms that we use here in, in the district to measure student growth. We use Achieve 3000, which is, uh, which is a, a secondary platform that we use to differentiate reading levels for our students. And we've seen a lot of growth in, in that area. Our STAR assessment, we've also seen growth as well. So we're excited about those signs of growth and we're hoping that those, those signs will, will continue as we move forward. Uh, we've, we've also invested in, as I was talking about earlier, uh, you know, evidence-based curricula such as Eureka Math, StemScopes, Foundations, DreamBox, which is a, which is a program that helps assist our, our students in grades K through eight in math. It provides them with opportunities to improve their, their math fluency, their math skills. ReadyGen, which again is the, the program in grades K through five, the reading program that we've just implemented this year, and Achieve 3000. The new district report card provides an opportunity for our schools to look more holistically. Again, as I said earlier, we're not just focusing solely on proficiency, although that's important. That's, that, that's the ultimate goal. But we want to make sure that our students are coming to school regularly. We want to make sure that our schools are not being disproportionately suspended. We want to make sure that when they come to school, they feel safe, that the culture and climate of our schools is conducive to their learning. And we've also embraced over the last handful of years, some, uh, some great programs. The Summit Program and the P-Tech Program, which we, um, utilize at the middle schools and at the socket high school. We have students who are, um, who have been very successful with, with that mode of, of learning. Both middle schools and the socket high school are also partnering. I mean, this is something that we're going to be coming to the school committee with respect to, um, the, uh, the secondary regulations, the RIDE secondary regs, say that every student in grades six through 12 have to have what's called an individual learning plan, which basically is a plan that students use for their social, emotional, um, growth, academic growth, career, um, opportunities. So all of our students will be utilizing, uh, that plan. And the, um, the, the, sort of the drop dead date that Ryan has, has given districts is 2021. So by 2021, every district has to have some IOP platform for students in grade six through 12. And then, um, lastly, at the high school, our graduation rate is improving. And, you know, I'm very hopeful that that's going to continue because I know that a lot of people are working really hard, you know, at the high school. And, and that's a systemic issue. It's not just a Wensocket High School issue. It's now pre-K through grade 12. Everybody plays a part in students graduating from the socket high school. It's not just high school teachers. It's not just secondary teachers, but everyone. So, um, that concludes my presentation this evening. Mr. Porche?
Dr. McGee, and one thing you didn't mention, what's the timeline with Harris?
Oh.
The full-on the CAV?
So.
What are we looking to get this done? Is this going to be this year?
So, so, good question. So in March, we have a, the first deadline is March, I want to say March 14, to submit the names to, uh, RIDE of, of the members of the, uh, of the, the advisory board. And then in May, we, we have to submit to RIDE a plan that Harris will create to address the, um, you know, the, the, them being in comprehensive category.
So the implementation is actually for next year?
It is, it is. And, and the good news is, is schools can come out of the comprehensive status on a year-to-year basis. So next, so this, this spring, when the, the RIDE pass is taken and all of those, you know, index scores are tabulated, conceivably, if, if Harris students show an increase in, in growth and proficiency, they conceivably could be taken out of the comprehensive category.
Great. Okay.
So without any, and, and Mrs. Kapiskas?
I just have a few questions.
Sure.
Is the code true that a school that was not incomprehensive can become a comprehensive?
Yes, they can. They can.
And number two, I, I brought attention to you, but I certainly hope that when we, the, the, the option is born at Hamlet, if considerations give a try to make sure the subgroups that Charlie represented, whether it's special ed, PML, technology, this again, if they have any perspective to give for an inclusive people, they can help.
Absolutely, we will. Thank you. So, are there any other questions? Um, thank you very much. You all know if you have any questions beyond this evening, um, come to me, email me, call me. And I, and I would like at some point to schedule the workshop to go, to go into the, to start giving the scores at some point in the future.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGee. I was very, I think we look forward to more improvement today. See how the count works at Harris and all the good things that we've got planned. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file these school support system, uh, the RIDE pass update results. Is there a second? Mr. Nado, seconded? Call of favor?
Aye.
Now we come down to the school committee, good one, and it's got a lot.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah, it's your, it's your location this time.
Uh, so I just, I only have one comment, which I actually did apologize. I think our meeting is on the 7th of February, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so I would just like to say, um, I will be asking for that particular meeting that we have.
It's the 13th.
Mine. And I don't want to apologize, but there will be one for that. There we go. Then I am going to pass. I do not have anything to add.
Ms. Kapiskas?
I wish I could say I want to pass, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware that the Wensocketville Schools Winter Concert is on January 30th, beginning at 5:30. It's here in this cabinet.
So the high school? So the high school.
So I would like to make sure.
Better seats, better room.
I agree. And I hope everyone takes the time to attend.
Mrs. Nado?
I just have one question. Um, are you sure to put Mr. Parton in center of the little well game?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do we as a whole committee work on those policies?
Typically, we have a policy committee.
Yeah.
That we will be working, so the folks assigned to the policy committee will be working.
I think I need to get on that committee.
Um, you've been assigned.
I know, but.
You want to take on a third committee, but we can't, we only have three people, so.
I know, I know, I know. It's just that, I just want to input in that area.
Well, obviously, each, we will, we will have the opportunity of every, at the school committee meeting, they make their report. And that committee will take whatever comments you make and will, and then they'll include that into their.
Yeah, okay. I know we can't have three people, it's just, um, I have some strong feelings about that.
I can tell. Wonderful. So I'm looking forward to your comments.
I'm sure you are.
Uh, my turn. Uh, I want to congratulate Mr. Dotteriani, Mr. Lezard, and all your custodians for the incredible job you've done with the cleanup and to get the ice with some sand, whatever you put on it, to shovel and do all that. Also, I want to thank you for, you, Dr. McGee and your staff, to go to all the schools and take care of the eating problems that we've had in the last couple of days. I know how important that is. And some, and sometimes it takes a lot of hands-on to walk into the classes to make sure everything is fine. So you've done a fantastic job with that. Um, I'm going to have to talk about the concerts and Mrs. Kapiskas over in Covenant. Thank you very much. And let's all have, and I'll turn it over to the vice chairman.
Once again, what I wanted to say is instead of waiting, I was going to mention the concert and tomorrow night's bachelor society, people will like it. But since our next meeting is, what, February 13th?
The 13th, yes.
It's after the Super Bowl, so we'll take it.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you, Galway, but spoken. Um, I, I've left out a motion to adjourn at this time at quarter nine.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, my vice chairman. Second, my Mrs. Nado, call of favor?
Aye.